Wonderful weather that you have given us. It's just been a blessing to be able to go outside and enjoy it. We need to thank you each and every day for all the unforeseen blessings that we have and we don't give you credit for. Please, we do this in men as they make decisions for our county. Please just give an extra loving hand to those that are hurting, those that are sick, those that you know their needs and please just be with all those that need you. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pray that they do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just read them last year.
[coughs]
Tire repair. Seems like it's a week too.
I'm gonna give them water from our cell.
Oh yeah?
A lot of trucks.
I'm gonna use the dead damn gun. Second gun. All in favor? Blanket purchase orders?
I'd like to order from District 2, from the county general. Do you want a dip jay county general? Not at all. There's District 2's.
He can't do that.
He can't do the ambulance. Go.
Give you some today. He's going on each one?
Yes.
Yeah, Marvin's on the radio again. He got done.
I just had one big one, Jamie. I thought I had, I saw it. Swivel my feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I guess there is.
You brother all over here.
It's awful hard on that shit.
Yeah.
Might have to put it between middle and bottom. Probably wouldn't get it from both sides.
Remember, next time, then gotta get anything road caution from me to put it on again.
You gotta remind me of that stuff.
I'm moving, shifting blankets.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution approving county commissioners district orders.
I did not grab that email that says those members. You guys have those?
Uh, I don't know. I haven't.
I meant to print this morning and I got. I can go grab it real quick.
Yeah, you might.
Did you change the orders?
No, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, next you're done with that. Marvin, you get some population down there. Shit, the boundaries didn't change.
What I think, or stating that the boundaries are not changing.
Well. Marvin was too short. Having that. I think there's gotta be a woman pregnant somewhere in there. So there are two more there. We can count.
Probably couple of more. And then the prison.
That, that fluctuates quite a bit.
But they don't count.
No, they took the count off it. I don't know why we ever on there starting with.
Somebody probably thought, that's how I get out of Sabrina, Miles. I mean, how many people?
Still, I go like a little gemma and forget that population crap.
I still like doing this.
Absolutely, there, there, and there.
Ain't more sense.
Yeah. Worked for years, why didn't, why didn't continue to work?
Well, you got District 2 going all the way south. And then District 3 going all the way up here. Just get off.
Yeah.
I didn't know, so I forgot that this morning.
Have to move it back to here.
That's one Kelly sent to me, the numbers. I don't have, that's the only one I have.
Okay. Well, we got, there's a different one.
I didn't get it.
When did Kelly send this to you?
Uh, last week on the 12th.
You got yours, no, he made me.
Yes.
That's the only one I have, was the numbers that I gave you guys.
Well, I'll bring them numbers, the actual true figures up and we'll fill this out. We'll get the DA to sign it.
Nobody's made a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Man guidelines for COVID-19 for Alabama.
We just got the exact same thing. We've got on here that they have 10 days and there's no carryovers. The only thing that I added was I changed the no carryover from 2021 on there. And then I changed the dates, of course. I just changed right there. I did no carryover.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need a motion?
Aye.
Printer cartridge order for all offices.
Jennifer got, talked to, for some reason she has a different representative. We couldn't go in with coast to coast because we get those printer cartridges a whole lot cheaper through them. Her representative said that with a lot, like a lot of things, there's gonna be a shortage of printer cartridges. Well, we can't continue business if we don't have a printer cartridge. I called my rep. He, he is new. He did not seem to think that there was. He said there is a shortage of printers, but there's not one of printer cartridges. And then his, the guy that's over him called back and he says, you know what? He says, we have plenty in stock, but I'm just not gonna guarantee that they're, you know, they're gonna always be there. I talked to Marvin on this. He said to get some quotes on what it would say to us if we did a big order. I asked Jennifer, I asked Nancy. Nancy said she didn't need anything. I have not heard back from Valerie whether she wanted some. The guy basically told us that on Jennifer's, he would give us a $10 break on each one. If we order three sets, then they'd send the fourth set free. On mine, for some reason, there's a difference in the price on mine. They would give us $20 off each cartridge and then the fourth set would be free if we ordered three. My two machines take different ones. Jennifer?
I have two, I have actually three different types of machines. I'm okay on one machine for a very good long while. But the other two, I'm out. I need to order, which I'm fine with ordering, but I typically order about six months and then in the spring, I'll order another six months. I have enough money in my budget to go ahead and do a year's supply if I stick with my quote and don't go in with Lenita's quotes. If I use my representative, I get a whole bunch of free cartridges, which that's a temporary thing right now. That's a year's supply and we're talking about $2,600 worth of toner to keep my printers running for a year.
Here, they gave us the $10.
I can handle 1,300, you know, now. But if I do 2,600, my budget is, you know, we're all tight on our budgets because we want to be. We are not trying to do excess. I can probably pull it off, but I'm gonna have nothing extra for, you know, if a tire goes out on the car or something like that. But most of my M&amp;O is pretty much, but it's, it's tight. Or I could possibly even move something out of one account just, and then move it back once the second half appropriations come. I've got enough, you guys approved enough. I'm just waiting for that second half appropriations, but in the meantime, I need to order now.
Wasn't she getting some on the?
I got enough in my appropriations if I get that second half.
That's out of her cash, under her cash account.
My cash account absolutely cannot be used for this because by statute, my, my cash account can only be used for new electronic equipment or software upgrades.
It's just 137.
And toner is neither of those two things. So, but I can use it out of something else.
Well, my question is, it's gonna save us a bunch of money.
Yeah.
If I were now, yeah, I get, I get all those things for, they're running some specials right now and they're moving toner. It's this supply thing that if I wasn't worried about the supply, I would order half now. Order half in the spring, like I've always done. And.
The figures I seen last week is almost half.
Half that?
No, half between where we've been doing it.
Well, they had quoted her buy three, get three free. Which is this quote here, which is this.
Yeah.
This quote here. But when I called them, they didn't tell me anything like that. So, yeah, if you, if she goes in with that quote from her person, that's half.
And this is a year, right?
That's a year's worth of my toner. Which I.
They buy me money.
I can do it out of my account. I just either have to move some.
I mean, if it's gonna say half, you know, maybe not quite half.
Yeah, but do you do all offices? I think that's kinda overreaching a little bit.
I went to all the other offices. The only one, I have not heard back from Valerie because she thinks hers is in her maintenance. Nancy said she was good on them. I didn't go downstairs because I think they go through on their, I think they print everything to their copiers downstairs.
And I think I'm the only one that runs color printers. And the reason I run color printers is because the OTC requires that I print pictures of every single building that I visit. So I have color printers and color printers are expensive.
Sure they are.
Now, whether you do it all offices and you take care of all of us, that's great, that's fine. But if you don't and I can handle it, I just have to move some things around and then move it around again when I get that second half appropriation.
I keep two on, two on hand. As soon as I have a place on those, I order one. That holds me. But if we're talking a shortage sometime in the year?
That's kinda like a toilet paper deal, how do you ever know?
I don't know, but I'm telling you, I run payroll.
That's why there was a toilet paper shortage. Everybody run out stocked up.
Well, and two, that's the other thing is, I don't know if this lady's trying to sell product, that she's giving me free product, or if Lenita's representative is more correct in that, you know, they're not. So we've got two different representatives saying to you.
From the same company.
You would think if they're wanting to give you one for every one you buy, there must be plenty of it right now.
That is not what was quoted when the other, not my representative, the one that supposedly over both of them. That's not what he quoted. So I don't want Jennifer to go off on her quote, the buy three, get three free.
I would say that's a fair, yeah.
Than mine.
But you can handle that out of your budget versus county general or?
I can handle it if I move a little out of a different account into my M&amp;O and then move it back. And I'm thinking move it out of capital outline to, and then I'd have to move it back. Yes, I'm working on that. I'm getting specs and things and deciding what I need to do. But yes, that's gotta be coming quickly, but.
But I mean, you have money up there.
Yes.
Can you use some of that? And then we may have else out on the table.
No, I mean, I think once I get that second appropriation, I'll just get it right back.
We're just waiting for the, the final of the money to come to the accounts.
Yes, because it's all the same money at the end of the year. It's just.
That sounds like the next piece of work.
Especially if you save money.
So you don't want me to order any from my office then?
That's fine.
We can't get them when it comes to people.
I don't worry, Brown. You manage whatever you want.
I'll make a motion.
I guess, what are we making a motion?
That we're not gonna order.
You're not gonna order?
She's gonna order out of her own budget.
Oh, okay.
You guys kept mine to where I can't order any extra, so.
Why did you cut your budget?
I cut my own budget. Last year, you cut it 5,000. I cut my own budget, last year you cut it five thousand, I cut it five thousand myself already.
Let's clarify that, we actually didn't cut your budget.
I can't order any extra, no. Because five thousand doesn't get me through the year.
I just wanted to be clear, yours was actually just straight approved.
This isn't extra for me, it's just one lump year also. I would say that's not extra toner for me.
Well, mine neither, I mean, I go, I order them every four months, I have enough for eight months, it doesn't get me through a year.
Yeah.
So, it's not getting any extra. Who was the second?
I don't think we have, I guess I'll see. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for appropriation fund adjustment for recantation of general.
These are those ones that we discussed. I just typed up the same little resolution that we do when we do temporary appropriations and then I just attached what we agreed, where it, the adjustment is going to. And. Then, so there's a place on the actual resolution, there's a place on the adjustments. These are the ones that we discussed.
You didn't offer to me. I'm gonna reject their resolution.
I'll say it, all in favor?
Aye. Anybody run a grand tally on what the plus and minuses of this was?
Yeah, there's a grand total on that resolution. And a grand total on that, on that last page.
I guess all in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Transfer funds correction from old C O A general bill of sales tax to new C O A general bill of sales tax. Two hundred, talk about a thousand, two hundred and fifty, forty-one cents from approaching funds to adjustments for recantation.
This is where we put it into that old cash contingency account from sales tax. We don't use that account anymore, so we just transferred it into the very next one, which is the new, um, chart of account number. So it's this one right here, I notate, yeah, I notated it on here that we're gonna transfer it into the thirteen eleven. There's the correction on it.
And is you in a bother?
No, approved by the second one.
Move, get the transfer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Air Med, can we begin premium deduction in November? Resolution twenty-two dash hundred thirty-five approved, ten twelve two one.
Kristy emailed me back and she said the same thing, she hated for somebody not to have that coverage between October and January. So she asked, you know, we had been in that effective date, January one, twenty twenty-two on there. She asked if we could go ahead and make it effective, um, November's payroll. And I said, I would ask you guys and we could go through from there. So I'm just gonna put ten, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one on here, effective November, just thirty days on the calendar.
Yeah.
Thirty. I will let her know.
Make a sign up?
Yeah.
I'll make motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Position open and to be filled within accounting. And that's just to go out and have.
To, to go, to send, uh, if you guys have a job duty description, we can send that to all, um, departments or supervisor or whatever you want you to send to. Or if you guys wanna send it. Just to make it known to the public, or known to the county. So you're gonna have this position open.
Do you not think you're safer to open it to the public, take applications? I mean, that's just, just an idea, I mean.
You guys, and our handbook is saying that we can fill with them. Dale was the one that suggested this, is just to make sure you let everybody in, you know, in, that's employed with the county know about it.
I don't know what you think.
I just wanna be safe, I just wanna cover all our bases.
I really thought we just could hire with him.
Yeah.
Sounds like.
It was just, it was said to be safe.
Now, wasn't there a problem years ago back, that they moved a county employee from one position to another and advertised their, make it public? An issue with that?
I don't think there was ever a lawsuit or anything or, they did bring it up, but again, they didn't, I don't think they, to my knowledge, I didn't announce it to any other departments.
I don't think it's sure to go public.
I don't need that, I need, I need to go.
Covering all of the bases.
I think you're safer if you go.
Is somebody gonna send that to them to? Whether P O on and then we go make the job duty.
You just gonna call it head of housekeeping?
I might so.
Yeah.
Don't need to know the hours and the pay and. You don't miss out on application.
It'd be just the same as ton.
So it's gonna be, be thirty-four, thirty? And then the thirty-sixty and the. All right, so then I think you wanna.
Aye.
I'm here today.
Then I just vote to take no action. And then you want it on next week's to.
Yeah.
Well. And it does not come out of the agenda to go out for applications. I mean, for you guys, when you bring in, I mean, when do you want the applications due? That's when it needs to be on the, known and going to executive session so you can.
Well, we'll just put it on next week, just give thirty days.
Thirty days.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Accept applications, okay, today and next week. We're the twenty-fifth, you have, um, Thanksgiving in there, so do you want to accept them? I mean, we're close, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, since it's twenty-seventh, so do you want to?
Still the week after?
Yeah.
One, two, four weeks is actually just the nineteenth, if you give them four weeks, but then that's, um, you guys interview them then on the twenty-second? Or do you wanna go past Thanksgiving then?
No.
So, um.
Four weeks.
Until the.
That's why. If you don't have an application by four weeks, you ain't gonna get one.
Until November nineteenth.
Yeah.
Four thirty?
Deadline, yeah.
Or you want it before the agenda, then you don't put it on the agenda?
Yeah, we won't, but then the next week is Thanksgiving. Yeah, we want it to order available on the agenda for the next week.
So you want it to the, uh, let's just put the eighteenth then at four thirty. And then you wanna hold it on the agenda then on the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Now, just take no action today?
Take no action, I look, take no action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any unforeseen business?
What we're gonna.
Y'all singing it, all in favor?